Thank you, Ms. Pupu Walker, for being here for that honor.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right. I need a motion to adopt the agenda, or if there are any edits, I'll move.
No.
That was not bad.
That's okay. No one has seconded it.
No one has seconded it. So, do we have any edits to the adoption of the agenda? Ms. Player?
I would like to make the motion to move Item 2, the Resolution to Celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month in the Awards of Recognition as Part E before the Director's Report.
Second. All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
We're doing one item.
Okay. Thank you. I probably could have done them all together, but we're doing this separately since there are so many. Ms. Masters?
I'd like to remove Item 1B11, the Soon to Grow Contract.
And then Ms. Tyler, do we have any removals to the consent agenda?
Thank you. I'd like to pull 1B4.
All right, so we have taken care of moving Item 2 to after the Awards and Recognitions. We have two additional items from the consent agenda to be pulled, to be discussed. Can I get a first? Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you unanimously. I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. All right, we are first going to start off our meeting with the always exciting and probably one of our favorite parts of the meeting, the Awards of Recognitions. And we have a number of them, always good news happening at MMPS. And so I will let Dr. Battle start that off. Oh, no, I'm starting that off. I usually let Dr. Battle start it off, but it's me this time, guys. All right, so the first thing that we have is the Davidson County Legislative Delegation Proclamation, which we are so appreciative of, and we are really excited about it. So tonight, we have several of these exciting awards. And before I turn it over to Dr. Battle, and I apologize for that confusion, Matt, please have State Senator Cindy Heidman Campbell to deliver this recognition on behalf of Davidson County Legislative Delegation. Excuse me for stumbling on that.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you all for everything you do. It's good to see you. Very good to see all of you sitting here. So over the summer, we learned that MMPS and, of course, exams exceeded all expectations, achieving Level Fives in system-wide literacy, numeracy, and that has not been done since before 2015. And a social studies grade of four, which is the highest score since 2016. Of the 132 district-run schools, there were 42 Level V composite schools, which is over a third of our schools, 51 schools with a IV or a V composite, and 86 schools with a Level III, IV, or V. Since these achievements were announced, the good news has gotten even better, with even more schools making advances. Forty-eight MMPS schools are now reward schools, and two schools have moved from priority status to reward status. Truly remarkable accomplishments and proof that local districts know how to get the job done. As Chair of the Davidson County delegation, my fellow legislators and I were thrilled to issue a statement of congratulations to the district. I'd like to read it to you all now. We could not be prouder of Nashville students, teachers, and staff for what they achieved on their end-of-year tests. Student growth is not preordained. It takes dedication, resolve, and hard work in the best of times. Coming out of the pandemic, the progress we're seeing in Metro Nashville Public Schools is even more remarkable. These outcomes show us what's possible when our educators have the classroom resources they need to help our kids be successful. President Biden's American Rescue Plan infused almost $300 million of COVID-19 relief into Nashville schools, which should serve as a reminder to the state that Nashville teachers can do wonders when they either have the support and have the respect of all of our state leaders. So once again, on behalf of the Davidson County delegation, congratulations to all of the students, teachers, staff, and parents for their amazing achievement and commitment to our children and their education. And I have a signed letter here to share with you from the Davidson County delegation.
Thank you so much to Senator Campbell. I apologize for first calling you just by your first name and having to correct myself. But thank you so much for also your support of us as MMPS, not just now in this situation, but in the past, and along with all the delegation. You have been really helpful to us as a delegation when we have had ongoing questions or concerns, of course, within the state, and having to work on that. We are really proud of the work that MMPS has done and the achievement that we've had. So we really appreciate that. And if you're okay with it, do you mind coming up here so we can take a photo with you, as we typically do during awards and recognitions?
Absolutely.
Okay. I guess we all can because it's all of us as a board. But it doesn't matter. All right. Thank you again, and I will now turn it over to Dr. Battle.
Thank you so much, Ms. Elrod. Again, thank you to Senator Campbell and the entire delegation for your support, and just celebrating all of our wonderful students and staff in leadership here in Metro Nashville Public Schools. We greatly appreciate it. So next, we have East Nashville Magnet High School's Avery Patton, who has been named the TSSAA 2021-22 Boys Basketball Coach of the Year. Let's give him a round of applause. All right, Coach Patton, stay put. I have to make you blush just a little bit. So as you all know, Coach Patton led the East Nashville Eagles to the 2022 TSSAA Class II A State Championship. This prestigious honor is based on his positive work with the student athletes in the East Nashville basketball program. And TSSAA will be submitting Coach Patton's name to the National Federation of State High School Associations for further honors at the sectional and national levels. What you might not know is that Coach Patton is an MMPS alumnus, having graduated from Gwinnett High School, and he was an All-American basketball player for Trebekah Nazarene University, where he scored over 2,400 points and dished out over 600 assists. He is also a member of the Trebekah Athletics Hall of Fame. Coach Patton, thank you for your excellent work with our student athletes and for your dedication to Metro Nashville Public Schools. You make us so proud with your success on and off the court. And now, if you don't mind, Coach Patton, we would like to get a quick picture with you. And I believe I saw Principal Myra Taylor here, also representing East High School. If you can come and join us in the photo as well. But let's give him another round of applause for this honor.
Am I supposed to be up there as well?
Yes.
Now, we also have the pledge of recognizing a group of employees who work on behalf of all of MMPS employees and who have won a national award for their tremendous effort. In a few weeks, members of our Human Resources team will go to Bethesda, Maryland to receive the inaugural Carolyn C. Mattingly Award for Mental Health in the Workplace from the John Hapskins Bloomberg School of Public Health and the Love U Project. Here are a few of the initiatives and innovations by our team that the award evaluators took note of. The removal of barriers to health care for employees, particularly the removal of cost sharing for all mental health services for teachers. In 2019, all copayments for any mental health office visits for teachers, whether in-person or virtual, were removed. The establishment of the five Vanderbilt and MMPS employee and family healthcare centers, especially the variety of services offered, high utilization rates, and the no-cost model that removes all copayments for covered teachers. Our wide range of wellness programs and services to meet a variety of employee needs and to meet our team MMPS members where they are. A robust communication of services through multiple channels, a mental health and wellness survey conducted in the first quarter of 2022 to guide our future direction. This survey found that nearly nine in 10 participants agreed that the available mental health benefits were helpful to them and to their families. A high dosage, excuse me, usage of Employee Assistance Program, and MMPS demonstration of a culture of data-driven assessment, analysis, and response to employee mental health needs and risk factors, particularly the focus on health disparities and social determinants of health as well as our strategic alignment of programs and services to meet employees' needs. Now, our team has worked hard to meet MMPS employees where they are and to remove barriers to access to physical and mental health care. Employees and their family members can engage with health care professionals in a variety of ways, including in-person, telephonic, virtual, and app-based opportunities for care. We want our employees to have every opportunity to take care of themselves so they can continue to do great work for our students and families. I'm thrilled that our first-rate HR team is being honored for its own great work to make these benefits possible. So I would like to give a huge congratulations to Johnsey Hote, our MMPS Director of MMPS Employee Wellness. Can you come on up, Johnsey? Johnsey, thank you. Paula Pendegras, our Chair of the Teachers Insurance Trust. Lori Nettie, our Director of Clinic Operations for Vanderbilt Health at MMPS. And our wonderful David Hines, our Executive Director of Employee Benefits. He's unable to be with us tonight, so we wish him a speedy recovery. But let's give this team another round of applause and thank them for their leadership. Thank you. I mean, really innovating, leading, taking care of our team. I just love hearing all the ideas and the research and the data around what we're doing next, and it's paying off for us. And again, congratulations on this national recognition. If you all could come on up, we'd love to take a photo with you and wish you safe travels to Maryland to receive your award.
Dr. Battle, check your phone. I think Hank was trying to get in contact with you. I think Hank was trying to.
And I might also, as they're walking back to their seats, give them another shout-out that because of their great work and what they're leading here in Nashville, it recruited a special someone to Nashville last week to speak on this topic of health. And if you didn't hear about it, Serena Williams was in town last week. MMPS was a part of this celebration because of the great work and the partnership with Cigna. So y'all, they're doing great work. It's getting the attention of everyone. And again, kudos to the entire team. Thanks. All right, I think I have.
I was gonna say, you want to do the next one?
Yeah, sure. Finally, we have a very special group of music teachers with us tonight. So every year, the CMA Foundation honors music teachers of excellence from across the country. These are teachers who have huge impact on their students and their school communities. Our incredible MMPS music teachers are always well-represented among the music teachers of excellence, and this year was no exception. Last week, the CMA Foundation honored the following teachers at a ceremony featuring U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cordona. Please come on up to the podium as I call your names, and then we would like you to stay so we can take a quick picture. All right, first up, we have Alicia Ingram from Eagleview Elementary. John Hazlitt from McGavick High School. Trey Jacobs from Nashville School of the Arts. Tyler Meredith from Hillwood High School. Samantha Reed, Oliver Middle School. Emily Riley from Julia Green Elementary. Danielle Lee Taylor from Tuscaloosa Elementary. Susan Waters, MMPS Music Coach. And last but not least, Frank Zimmer from Antioch High School. So I know they were celebrated in a big way last week, but congratulations to all of these amazing teachers, leaders, on a job very well done. And thank you for your commitment to teaching, to music, to the arts, to our schools, and to our students. So as I promised, I'd love for y'all to come on up so we can get another photo of you and celebrate you for your excellence. Thank you.
I would just love to shout out NSA. They had a performance just a few weeks ago, and I took my four-year-old son, and he paid attention the entire time and actually started singing to me in the car. So thank you, Trey. Thank you for that. But really, it was beautiful. I appreciate it.
On that note, we really appreciate everybody being here tonight. We know that takes up time in the after-hours, but we're so happy to celebrate you. It's very nice to always know that we're being recognized, and our teachers are being recognized, and our students are being recognized. So it's really exciting to have both Coach Patton and, of course, our mental health experts and those that are organizing it, and, of course, our music teachers. I'm so excited to see our music teachers being recognized, and there's a focus on that. So as you may remember, the adoption of the agenda, we moved Item Number 2 to before the Director's Report, in case we want to move the agenda up. Item Number 2 is the Resolution to Celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, honoring Virginia Pupu Walker as the first Hispanic person elected to the Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education. And I will pass this over to my colleague Vice Chair here.
I make a motion to approve the resolution. Resolution to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, honoring Virginia Pupu Walker as the first Hispanic person to be elected to the Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education. Whereas, Virginia Pupu Walker was born and raised in Nashville, Tennessee, is a proud graduate of Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools, the daughter of a Cuban immigrant and a rural Tennessee native. Mrs. Pupu Walker is a wife and mother of two children who also graduated from Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools. Whereas, Virginia Pupu Walker has worked in education for over two decades. She was a Spanish teacher and a Spanish and history teacher in metro public schools. Her career evolved into community and family engagement to ensure her community had access to the best educational resources available. As Mrs. Pupu Walker's career progressed, she became a statewide leader in the nonprofit sector advocating for Latino-Hispanic communities in education. Whereas, in 2018, Virginia Pupu Walker was elected as the first Latina to be elected to the Metropolitan Nashville School Board. School Board Member Pupu Walker's election reflected the democratics of the Hispanic and Latino community, Latino student community of Nashville Public Schools, as we affirm diversity is one of our district's greatest strengths. Therefore, let it be resolved, as we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize and honor the election and the tenure of School Board Member Virginia Pupu Walker as the first Hispanic to be elected to the Metropolitan Nashville Schools Board of Education. Rec commemorate her contributions to Hispanic and Latino communities with her advocacy in education.
Thank you. All right. May we please have a vote? If you are all in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. Thank you. It is all unanimous. I appreciate that. Thank you. If we may have our past colleague, Ms. Pupu Walker, come up for a photo with Ms. Player Peters and me. That would be lovely. I would say the board may join as well.
Let's do everybody.
Yes, you're welcome to. I'm so sorry, Dr. Battle. We appreciate some of our past colleague, Ms. Pupu Walker, being here. I am proud to serve on a board that honors the diversity of not only our staff, but our student population, but also within our own colleagues. I think it's really important that we represent the public that we represent. And so I appreciate that we were able to honor her, especially in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. And I know that that is important to particularly Ms. Player and I's districts, as we have probably the highest population within Nashville. So thank you so much for your work as a colleague, but also continuously. So we appreciate that. Thank you. All right. We will move on to the Director's Report.
All right. Thank you again, Chair Elrod and board members. I hope everyone had an excellent and restful fall break, but it's good to be back with everyone. Before I jump in, I do want to acknowledge all of our friends and colleagues in St. Louis, Missouri. Again, another devastating occurrence. And again, our hearts, prayers, thoughts go out to them as they continue to do what's best for their students and families and their staff, creating the right conditions and safety, but at the core of everything we do, educating all of our students. And so just wanted to acknowledge our friends and colleagues and families in St. Louis. I also want to acknowledge two of our great partners who are here with us this evening, Commander Scott Byrd and Lieutenant Jason Pecanza from MMPD's School Safety Division. We appreciate you all's continuous partnership, just your innovation and push to do what's right and best here in Metro Nashville Public Schools and in Nashville in general. So thank you for your leadership and for your commitment to our kids, our families, and our staff. Greatly appreciate you. So before we get into the assessment update, I wanted to give a quick note from the world of MMPS athletics. Things just keep getting sweeter and sweeter with our student athletes. So Hume-Falk sophomore Rachel Waters recently proved without a doubt that she is one of the best golfers in Tennessee. Rachel not only qualified for the TSSAA Golf State Championship Tournament in Sevierville, she also was near the top of the leaderboard for the entire first round, shooting a blistering two over par 72. I think I know what that means. And according to observers on the course, she hit a remarkable 16 greens in regulation during the first round, a feat that is rarely matched on even a professional tour. So congratulations to Rachel, and thank you for representing metro schools so well. I also wanted to recognize the Hillsborough High Girls Volleyball Team, led by Coach Sarah Rucker, who finished fourth in the TSSAA Championship after defeating Lebanon and Maryville High Schools. Please note that this was the first time in the state tournament since 1982. So congratulations to all of these fierce competitors for their great achievements, the student athletes, the coaches, the parents, the staff, who all cheered them on and rallied them to their fourth-place finish. So let's give Rachel and Hillsborough's girls volleyball team a round of applause. All right, so the purpose of the Director's Update tonight is to provide an overview of how we selected our new assessment system. You've heard lots about this over the last few months and the intentionality around our assessment system, also to provide a snapshot of the data the new system provides and how we plan to use it. And thirdly, to provide the data that the board is accustomed to seeing generated from the new system itself. So I would like to invite up Dr. David Williams, who is our Executive Officer, leading our Teaching and Learning Team, and also Dr. Tina Stinson will be joining him in this presentation. And Tina serves as our Executive Director of our Research, Assessment, and Evaluation Team. So thank you both for your leadership and for helping us really dig into this assessment update today.
Well, thank you. I get to follow all the recognitions and celebrations with assessment update.
We'll nerd out with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're going to a little bit. So good evening, Chair Elrod, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I'm pleased to provide an update on our assessment system alongside my colleague here, Dr. Tina Stinson, Executive Director of Research, Assessment, and Evaluation. As usual, we view our work through our core tenets, focused outcomes, and signature initiatives. So with regard to academic assessments specifically, we want to empower leaders at all levels to make decisions based on data, to make a positive difference for kids, and then a to make decisions based on data, to make a positive difference for kids, and then equipped with meaningful and actionable information about student learning, teachers are then able to create engaging, rigorous, and personalized learning experiences for each student. I want to ground us in the MNPS Assessment Vision and Belief Statements. First, assessment should form a coherent system, providing academic data along the continuum of student learning while minimizing or eliminating redundancies. Next, assessment should be administered timely and purposefully across the school year and with consideration for all critical instructional activities and classroom assessments given. Finally, the information generated should be meaningful, actionable, and provided in time to make a positive difference. In short, assessments are about learning, identifying where students are in their learning and what decisions can be made and actions that can be taken to improve outcomes. I want to quickly sketch where we have been with regard to district assessments over the last few years. Some of this will look familiar to you going back to 2016. Primarily, MNPS has utilized NWA's MAP Growth Assessments for Literacy and Math. We've also utilized FastBridge for academic screening. MAP is an adaptive, norm-referenced, standards-based assessment. Adaptive means the assessment responds to student responses. As students get questions correct, the assessment gets progressively more difficult and vice versa. Norm reference means that the results are compared to other students taking this assessment across the country. Standards-based means that the questions are written to assess competencies on a prescribed set of knowledge or understandings. FastBridge is a skills-based measure, but it is also norm-referenced. A skills-based measure aims to assess student ability on skills that are necessary and required for students to better access grade level standards. A few strengths, on the left of the screen, if you can see that, of our previous system was that MAP provides a strong, stable growth measure of student learning across time. Since it is adaptive, it is able to precisely zero in on student ability. Data generated gave recommendations to teachers about content students were ready for or what additional supports may be needed before students are ready to progress into new content. Alongside MAP, our screening process was already in compliance with FastBridge with state administration and reporting requirements. There were some limitations and challenges as well. Because MAP is a norm-referenced assessment, we had very limited information about student performance with respect to grade level state standards against our scope and sequence. There were some features of MAP that were not being fully utilized, and there were also features of FastBridge that were not being fully utilized. And so that created some redundancies because a lot of the different parts of the assessments perform the same measure. There were inefficiencies in our assessment approach because we were using two nationally normed measures which needed to be administered within certain windows to maintain their validity. A fourth grade student, for example, would take FastBridge for screening and MAP right at the very beginning of the school year. Working across two systems meant that staff were working across two different platforms for both administration and reporting. And finally, there was an emphasis in our district on how our students performed against a normed sample of students across the country instead of against grade level state standards. In anticipation of the contracts for both MAP and FastBridge set to expire at the end of last school year, we began the plans for the RFP early last school year and released the RFP in October of 2021. Our goals here on the screen were to more closely align with our assessment vision and belief statements and address some of the limitations and challenges of our previous system. We sought a more coherent system to assess both skills and standards. We wanted more actionable data to move students forward in their learning, and we also wanted to balance our assessments across the year and strengthen and streamline our screening On the left side, you can see data and information we have with our previous system, but I think I've kind of talked enough about that. So I'll focus on the right side of the screen here, focusing on what we have in place for this year. Both FastBridge and DNA are components from a single vendor that gets at the more coherent experience for our school staff and students. FastBridge continues to be our universal screening assessment for grades K through nine. Because we use their adaptive measures as part of our universal screening, we have unlocked what's called a screening to intervention report, not previously available. It's generated by the platform and makes recommendations for interventions, progress monitoring for students who need intervention, as well as recommendations for small group and whole group instruction. DNA is the platform for our standards-based benchmark assessment. These are given in all TCAP-tested grades in subject areas. So now we have assessments in science and biology, as well as all of our tested high school courses. So at a glance, this slide recaps all the information shared up to this point regarding our new assessment system this year. Assessments one and two, you can see there, those form the basis of our universal academic and dyslexia screening process. You have a skills-based screener. With FastBridge, we also have our growth measure. That's our adaptive reading and A reading and A math, which are adaptive reading and adaptive growth measures. Those are based on standards, and those two taken together form our screening process. And then assessment number three on the screen is our achievement measure, and that is again based on standards aligned to our state standards according to our scope and sequence. It may help as we go through the presentation to think about what questions these assessments intend to answer. The first assessment, the screener, attempts to answer the question, where is additional support needed and for whom? The second assessment, a growth measure, attempts to answer the question, how are we doing? Where are we making progress? And then finally, the third question, the achievement measure, attempts to answer the question, are we getting there? I will now turn things over to Dr. Stinson.
Good evening, everybody. Before going into the data themselves, I wanted to provide a brief summary of what you will see on the next slide, just to help ground you. Dr. Williams talked about the MTSS Fall Assessments, which are our FastBridge assessments. The assessment window was August 10th through September 1st. We did have over 90.
Move your mic over a little bit.
Yes, I'm sorry. We did have over 95% participation rate, which was really good. And more than 36,000 students' grades 2 through 9 attempted the adaptive nationally-normed FastBridge reading and math assessments that Dr. Williams mentioned. District reading and math scores were comparable, very similar in scores in our lower grades, but we had more students or a greater percentage of students scoring well on math than reading, which is the opposite of what we used to see on MAP. And we'll delve into a little bit of why. There are some, there's some good news in the data. And while the percentage of students in the lowest national quintile for math and reading increased in fall of 2021, last year during the pandemic, there were improvements in that in math for fall 2022. And in addition, the percentage of students scoring in the top two quintiles in reading also improved from fall '21 to '22. And that's particularly good because of some of the ways we've changed the administration that I'll get into in another slide. Also, as has been the case for years and is true across the state and the country, we do see some achievement gaps between our student groups that we are working very hard to improve upon. Okay, so this chart may look familiar to you. It's very similar to the ones that Dr. Changis used to give to you, but because we have some new board members and because it's probably been a while, I'm going to just start with quickly, what is a quintile? A quintile takes the distribution of scores across the nation. There's norming studies with large numbers of students and puts the first to 20th percentile students in the first quintile, up to the 80th to 99th percentile in the top quintile. So what we are looking at in this slide is where do our students fit relative to those national quintiles? You can see the national average line across that 20%, so 20% in each group is what we would see nationally. So what I mentioned before, even though we're using two different assessments and we really don't want to, they're not comparable because they were normed differently at different times, et cetera, et cetera, you know, we still took a brief look at how we did last year versus this year. This is very similar distribution to what we saw in fall 2021 for MAP. However, the good news is with MAP, we had students using accommodations like read aloud and whatever they have in their IEP. Because FastBridge is being used as a screener, that is not an appropriate thing to do. So now we're comparing that apple to this orange and are still doing, you know, roughly the same. So doing roughly the same without accommodations is really good news. So there was a small, very small increase, less than a percent, about half a percent in the number of students falling in this lowest quintile between MAP last year and FAST this year. However, those top two percentiles, top two quintiles, we do have a greater number of students in those top two. And again, without accommodations and with accommodations are very different things. FastBridge A math quintiles, again, we don't really want to get into what it was like last year, but we are seeing some improvements in the number, rather, the percentage of students in that bottom quintile. The bottom quintile for us really is just telling us that these students may need interventions. They may, because there is also the standards-based data that schools and teachers should be looking at and all the rest of the suite of FAST assessments, as well as what teachers know about the students they teach. And we did that with, the top two quintiles stayed about the same. When we're talking about the impact of the accommodations, depending on reading or math, we had about 23% of our students using those accommodations. But that meant that we could not really tell where our students needed help, right? And so that we're scoring very similarly is very good news. I'm going to change chart type for a second, even though the data are drawn from the same place. Remember I said the percentiles fall into one of five quintiles? In this case, on this chart, the median national percentile first per student group is what is being shown. So we use a median, which is basically just the number, you know, the percentile below which half of our students, half of national students fall, right? So the national average would be 50 for all students across the nation. It would, you know, and each student group might have its own national median. However, you can't average percentile, so we use the median, but it's roughly similar in concept. So you can see, I'm not going to go through every single one of these numbers, but you can see where we have some gaps. They are largely similar to what we saw last year, with the exception of the students with disabilities and non-students with disabilities and English learners and not EL students. The reason being the accommodation. And again, there's, you know, state has strongly recommended that we not use accommodations on a screener. It's not a good practice. So the benchmarks, however, do have accommodations. So there is a place where we can gauge how students are doing with their accommodations. MNPS A math achievement by student group. Overall, again, we did a tiny bit better with math than ELA, and you can see, again, the gaps. They fall where we would expect, you know, these to be. However, some of the gaps are smaller in math than they are in reading. And that concludes this portion of the presentation. However, I do want to say what we're going to look forward to in the future. As Dr. Williams said, and I said at the beginning of the presentation, these data we are primarily using to track student growth. So regardless of where an absolute number is at this moment in time, the primary reason we are showing this to you is so that in, you know, in spring or, you know, late winter, we can show you how our students are growing much in the same way that you used to see. Dr. Williams?
All right. Thank you. So Ms. Player, you said we're going to geek out. Is that what you said? Okay. So we'll see how we do. Before I go through some key takeaways with respect to the benchmark administration, I want to provide a little bit of context. We do have information across all of our tested subjects and grade levels, but for tonight, I'm just going to illustrate some high-level analysis from grades three and seven. So just to review, the benchmark was administered in grades three through eight for ELA math and science. Social studies would have been added in grades six through eight. In high school, we have integrated math 1, 2, 3, English 1 and 2, biology, and US history. And those are the grade levels and content areas that would have taken our benchmark I also want to point out that I will be sharing some raw data points as percentages, but that's just for relative comparison about where our students saw success and where they saw challenge. It's not correlated to a grade level. We can't make any judgments about is this good or bad. It's just we can see where did our students seem to struggle the most and where did they find the most success. And also, we just finished our window, makeup window last Friday. And so the vendor and RAE with, led by Dr. Stinson, will be doing some analysis to correlate those to TN Ready and TCAP, just not ready yet because that process is just getting started. So I'm going to start with third grade math and look at first some general trends and then some content trends. In third grade, our students found the most success with calculator item types and multiple choice, traditional multiple choice item where you have four answer choices and you pick the correct one. Students generally struggled with, more with non-traditional items and also with non-calculus items. For the first time now with our benchmark, one thing that's really exciting is we have content-specific data aligned to our grade level standards that we can look at, and we can see that students were most successful demonstrating their understanding of representations of area as a sum of N non-overlapping unit squares, which is fantastic. Students did struggle with multiplying and dividing. Those are new arithmetic operations in third grade within 100 to solve word problems. In third grade ELA, what we start to see is that the passage matters. So there's one passage called Jellyfish, where students were asked to determine the meaning of unfamiliar words or phrases, and also distinguish literal from non-literal or figurative language. While another passage asked students to rewrite sentences for clarity and grammatical correctness. You can see how students perform with respect to the questions on each of the passages. Forty-five point eight percent of students scored correctly on jellyfish, forty point two on throat singers. I'd also point out that Jellyfish was aligned to our Wooden Wisdom Module, so they're studying sea animals and creatures of the sea. So we try to extend that topic and theme all the way through the benchmark so students felt like an extension of their learning in the classroom. In science, we also see students were typically more successful with multiple choice items, but struggled with more of the non-traditional item types. And just quickly, non-traditional typically means maybe a multi-select where there may be five answer choices and students are asked to pick the two that are correct or the three that are correct. And so that's fundamentally a different cognitive process than the multiple choice where you're picking the one correct answer. Again, we see content matters. Students were more successful recognizing that energy, kinetic energy, is present when objects move, but struggled to describe the phases of matter like solids, liquids, and gases. Seventh grade math, my favorite. Students were more successful with traditional item types and non-calculus items. So we see a pattern here with the item types. This actually cuts across all grades and content areas that I have personally analyzed. And also I'll point out that students tended to do better with non-calculus items in grades four through seven and struggled more with calculator items in grades four through seven. For content, students were successful identifying the constant of proportionality or the unit rate in a proportional relationship, but struggled to represent that proportional relationship when they were presented one with maybe a table or graph and had to create the equation that associated those varying quantities. In ELA... In ELA, students, again, tended to struggle. You can see this pattern. Continue. For content, students were, again, more successful using context clues to identify the meaning of an unfamiliar word or phrase, but struggled with the passage where they had to identify the theme or central idea. And in this case, there were two texts presented, because now we're in seventh grade, and looking at two texts together as a single passage and maybe doing some analysis can be a little bit more complex for our older students. In seventh grade science, students scored better on recall questions. But again, you can see the pattern of struggling with different item types. With respect to content, students performed better with models illustrating the atomic structure, so understanding where neutron, proton, electrons are and their relative charges. But they also struggled to use the periodic chart to understand the nature of the elements under analysis. In social studies, again, we see a familiar pattern of item types. We did see a lot of success when students were presented a map and had to identify countries that were labeled. They were most successful identifying countries on the map of East Asia in particular, but struggled to understand how empires evolved in ancient Europe and how languages and religions So some overall benchmark takeaways. Let me get my notes here. So first, students need the opportunity to practice non-multiple choice items. Just want to be clear that we want to respond and not react and certainly not overreact. But we think it's incumbent upon us to give our students the best opportunity to demonstrate their knowledge and provide an even playing field, so that if we have a state test and that's what our district and our schools are held accountable to, we want to give our kids the best chance to be successful and be confident when they go into a test-taking environment and demonstrate their knowledge. The student success varies by passes with ELA. So we know that there are different levels of complexity, different writing styles, the nature of the topic that's being written about varies, of course. So we can go further and see, well, which particular items presented most challenge to our kids and what other supports do we need when we annotate and we analyze pieces of text. With regard to the calculator, what's important to understand is just because you have a calculator available on the test doesn't mean you have to use it. So understanding when it's most efficient and appropriate to use and where it's actually okay to ignore it, because I may have a more efficient strategy that's a little more straightforward and not be distracted by the calculator. I also want to clarify that teachers have access, I just did some sample analysis across the grade levels and content areas and share with you three, seven, teachers have access to the same information. They can look at all the items. They have the same access to all the data and reports that I've shared with respect to item types, levels of depth of knowledge, the different passages, the standards. All of that is available to teachers for all their students who participate in the assessment. So teachers now have content-specific information. And again, we didn't see the questions on MAP because it was adaptive, so every fifth grade student would have gotten a different test, depending on how they were doing, since it's adaptive, and teachers wouldn't have been able to see the questions or the standards that those particular questions were aligned to. But now we're armed and equipped with that information. And again, teachers have access to all the items. So depending on how an item is presented, is it text-heavy? Was there a graph? Was there a visual aid? Was there a model? Was there a map? What was it about the question that may have presented challenges, so we can think about incorporating supports into our instruction as we move forward? So next steps. Again, schools have, as Dr. Stinson noted, we have all of our benchmark data that I just went through, our A-reading and A-Math growth data, as well as the other assessment pieces of our FastBridge screening for progress monitoring in the data warehouse. And again, it's in a coherent platform with the Illuminate site. We're working towards making sure that teachers, sorry, students and families have access to this data that's in a meaningful and useful way and put that on the personalized student dashboard. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking at making these statistical correlations to TN Ready to make projections about where students are expected to perform at the end of the year. But also, having this information allows us to intervene positively and alter that projection in a positive way. And we're also providing professional developments and supports with coaches, with our principals. Larry Miles and I, district assessment, I'm sorry, district data coordinators, I didn't get that right, led a session with principals on October 7th. We're providing protocols, making sure that all school staff understand how to access and appropriately use these supports, these reports. So with that, Dr. Battle, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Williams, Dr. Stinson, for leading us through this director's report, and certainly to Dr. Mason Bellamy, who leads the entire division of schools and academics. So with that, that will conclude the director's update. And Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have questions? I will start with Ms. Tyler.
My first question is, do the tests, are they kind of, do they compare to where the students should be? Are they timed to coincide with information that should have already been presented? Or will students be expected to answer questions that they maybe haven't learned about yet that will come later in the semester?
Are you referring to the benchmark assessments specifically?
Yes.
So we've intentionally aligned those to only content and standards that were taught in the first quarter for all of our grades and content areas. As we move forward, that will also be true quarter two, quarter three.
Okay. Thank you. And before we move on, I just want to say, I'm really glad to see that teachers have access to all the items of knowing exactly what their students were struggling with, where they had successes. That information, as you said, has not previously been available, and that has really caused issues about whether or not the test is actually helpful. And having that information at a teacher's fingertips provides something that's actually helpful, that can inform their instruction. So that's what a test is supposed to do.
Ms. Tyler, if I can just mention, I mean, the most consistent feedback that I've personally received about the new suite of assessments is access to the reports and the data. That is by far the number one piece of feedback that we have received. So thank you for acknowledging that, and certainly to the team for pushing for navigating, kind of designing our system in that way. And before we move on to the next question, I also want to give a thank you to Renita Perry, who also leads our Schools of Innovation and the team that just works so well in this space.
Thank you.
I have a really simple question, at least assuming it's simple. Can you give me some examples of what your non-traditional math items are?
Yes, certainly. Great question. Generally, in the lower grades, you will see a question that is referred to as a multiple select or multi-select item. And so it could say, could be a question of something like, which are all directions on a compass? And you would have north, table, south, chair, microphone. Well, two of the answers are correct, right? The north and the south that I mentioned, the other three are incorrect. So in order for a student to get that question correct, they have to select both correct answers to get that question correct. If they get one of, one apart, in other words, if they selected north and chair, they would get that answer, that question wrong. So they have to correct, select all the correct ones and only the correct ones. The questions get a little more sophisticated as you get into older grades with the technology-enhanced items is what they're referred to, and they'll get into like drag and drop. You have a little dropdown to select the answer choices, maybe drag and drop to fill in the blanks of certain sentences. So you may have a word bank in the bottom and have to drag the right phrase or word into the correct place in the paragraph. So they can get a little more complicated, but those are examples of non-traditional items. A traditional item would just be your multiple choice, four questions and four answers, and you pick the right one.
Okay. So they're generally word problems?
Could range. It could be, those item types could assess any, any type of knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I want warning, I have several questions. So thanks in advance. So first, as a parent, I, you know, had gotten really used to MAP, and I knew what to look for, you know, especially thinking about RIT score and growth percentage and sort of the where my kids fall, national norm, et cetera. Do you all have a sense of what parents will see when they get? So I understand that the data will be put into the portal, which is great. And I just checked and I haven't seen mine yet, but that doesn't mean it's not there or won't be soon. But will I, as a parent, get a report? What does the report look like? You know, do I have, will I get those kinds of same numbers, so I know what to be thinking I want for my kid?
Yes, we are actually actively in discussion about which data elements to place in there that will make, and how to make sense of those data. So I don't have an exact answer for you yet, other than that they will be there, because you can score really well in one thing and not really well in others, and that may not be alarming to a teacher.
But it would be to a parent.
Right. So active discussion.
Yep. If I can advocate at all for something that shows sort of a growth goal, if that's the type of thing that's possible, I know that that's something that I do hear parents actually sort of tag onto and discuss. I don't know if that is possible.
We will certainly discuss that.
Speaking of that sort of, so when we see this information, again, we will see something relative to growth. What kinds of things should we expect to see relative to growth if we're sort of, again, used to doing that like growth percentile type calculation?
So we are going to be using the A-reading and A-Math and looking to see if a student's percentile remained the same or improved from test A to test B and from test A to C. And that's very, very similar to what you would have gotten from MAP.
And I apologize if I should be directing these questions to you, Dr. Battle, instead. I think that's probably how I was supposed to do it. Sorry, I jumped right in. If you, if we, you mentioned, Dr. Stinson, that you were doing some comparison, not really wanting to, with FAST last year and MAP this year. Have you all looked at all at MAP, I'm sorry, at FAST last year to FAST this year? And do we have a sense of that?
We are looking at that at a high level, but as I mentioned earlier, we weren't fully utilizing all the assessments in FastBridge. We weren't using the adaptive measures last year, and so now we are. So if you, even if you look in at an aggregate, it's a little bit of a different comparison. What we could do is look at only the discrete assessments, which are limited, because some of the assessment probes are just a few minutes, curriculum-based measures, really, really quick. So we could do that, but it would be, again, with heavy caveats.
Yeah. Okay. So I just have one last question. So I'm curious about the middle school math results being, I think, Dr. Stinson, you pointed out, higher than reading, which my sense is that that's not, that that's inconsistent with some of the other data that we've seen? And do you all have any thoughts about that?
Go ahead, Tina. Thank you.
Yes, we do have some thoughts about that, and we will be exploring it further, but we are pretty certain that the accommodations issue explains all, like almost all of that difference, because if you are, say, an English learner, it's easier for you to access the math content on A-reading and A-Math.
A-reading and A-Math, right.
The benchmarks have the accommodations.
Got it. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Clary? I just have a couple of questions, and I don't know if these are relevant or not, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but just from a community aspect, how does the assessments prepare or, I guess, benchmark how students prep for the ACT and SAT? Is it relevant? Is it completely not relevant? Is it only just for academic measurement and has nothing to do with one or the other?
No, that is a great question. We were actually in a conversation about that today. And we were talking about the trajectory between elementary, middle, and high. Then we look at ACT as an 11th grade assessment. It's not a high school assessment. It's really the totality of their experiences across the grades. And so all of our teachers, elementary, middle, and high, have an interest in preparing students for that ACT. And the best thing that elementary teachers can do to prepare students for the ACT in 11th grade is teach their content well, right? Teach their students well. And Dr. Stinson could also probably talk more about this, but we do have strong T-Voss projections from how our students performed on our achievement test correlated very strongly to ACT. So if we're thinking about the best way to prepare kids for ACT is to teach our state standards well and teach our kids well, of course.
Okay. And then how does the assessment measure, I guess, the narrative of learning loss from the pandemic? Like, does, does it, I guess, how to respond to that when people in the community ask, how do you measure learning loss? Has there been learning loss? And how do we assess that, I guess, now, since we're kind of now a full academic year outside of the pandemic?
Yeah, it's a great question. We prefer to use the learn acceleration, term acceleration, and also unfinished learning. So if a student's growth and their academic progress was stunted by, disrupted by the pandemic, we call it unfinished learning. And so what these assessments do is, again, allow us to track screening, where kids need additional supports, growth, how are they progressing and making progress from one administration to the other? And with respect to the grade level standards, we have an obligation to teach students those grade level standards, regardless of their ability level or, you know, what the growth percentile says. And so what we're doing with this assessment system is we can look comprehensively at where students are and dial in very specifically what they need to move forward in their unfinished learning, if that's the case. And we've built in a lot of additional supports for a lot of our scope and sequence, our math scope and sequence, for example, has opportunities for teachers to go back and provide additional remediation to account for some of that unfinished learning based on the data.
Okay. My last question. How do these overall test scores affect that we have a critical mass of students who are not proficient in English? So how is that affecting our average or median aspect of the assessment?
Or the adaptive or the benchmark? We're trying to think about those differently, just because the accommodation on the adaptive measure is not allowed, but it is on the benchmark. So I was just trying to clarify, are you talking about just in general?
Just in general, like, in general, it's ever easier for you to answer or what's best for the answer.
Right. So on the screening measure, again, accommodations are not allowed. We want to really be able to identify the skill areas that may need support. And if we had an accommodation that may mask the very thing we're trying to identify. And so those students who don't speak English natively may struggle on that. We do allow full accommodation. So when we're looking at IEP and what accommodations are going to be provided on TN Ready, we're trying to replicate that to the maximum extent possible. So if that is extended time, even though the benchmarks are not really a timed test, if there's a text-to-speech accommodation that needed to be configured in the system, that's also done for students who need it.
So ultimately, between the two assessments, you'd be able to assess what is the actual language barrier, and then what is they need enrichment or support and learning more academic content?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. See, I nerded out with you.
Thank you. Erin, you got your last question.
Sorry. One more question for all, is just, and this may be a question for Dr. Battle, but how, what is the, I think, like, it's awesome to have a test and a set of tests that are both testing different things, all of which we need to know about kids, and then also being able to give information back to, as you said, teachers and principals at a level that is pretty detailed on what students are learning. What's sort of the expectation for schools and teachers on how they're using this information instructionally?
Dr. Bellamy, thank you.
Thank you for the question, because really, that's what it's all about, right? It's what we do with the data, what Dr. Williams and Dr. Stinson were alluding to. So we immediately share some benchmark protocols with them. They go into, use the ILT structures, their instructional leadership teams. The majority of our schools will discuss this grade level data, school level data, teacher level data within their ILT to discuss what they would need to attack as a whole. And then, of course, teachers within their small learning communities are going to be looking at their class data that way, too. So the expectation is funneled down through the leadership side of the division of schools, the executive directors work with their principals and those ILT agendas, looking at and supporting what, depending on where the ILT is in that journey themselves. And so talented people in the, in RAE, I believe Larry Miles was mentioned earlier. Dr. Williams mentioned a PD he did with principals earlier to let them get familiar with the robust data that was available, in particular in the DNA platform, so that they could use the staff development days coming up and collaborative planning time that have been coming up since this, to leverage their ILT structures that they've worked so hard to put in place over the last year to do that.
The only other thing I would, I guess, question, I have a question about or advocate for, again, is just thinking about this as a parent who, like, I love assessment data for my kids. I would love to know how to support that from the perspective of being a parent and helping to know and understand what it is that I should be advocating for with my own children at home and maybe with teachers, et cetera. I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but, but I know, as you all get, and, I mean, these are new, right? So there's a lot. And step one is get it right with teachers and principals, because they're the experts. But whatever can be done to help parents understand well what this all means and what to help do about it, I think, would be excellent. And I'd be happy to.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's a new suite of assessments with clarity around why we do what we do, what we're expecting to learn from the data. So we're really kind of foundationally making sure that is really, really strong, but we've learned a lot. I mean, we've, there are reports that go home that are, that are consistent. I believe the FAST reports that go home are consistent to what we've sent home in the past. We're kind of thinking through, making sure we're sending the right information home around our benchmark assessments. We know our parents have access to our personalized student dashboard. We'll continue to leverage that. And in the future, just like we did with MAP, we'll start having some of those sessions where we can dig in. But we, we want to make sure that we're getting this right out of the gate, and all the supports are there, because we can send a lot home, and a parent can ask a question. can ask a question if the team is not ready to respond to it because they've not had an opportunity to get in there, dig into it, and understand it. We just want to guard against that, just making sure we're prepared and ready to go. But we will share the information, and we will continue to communicate out in a supportive, user-friendly way to make sure that we are all building kind of a knowledge bank of what our suite of assessments mean and how we plan to respond. David and I, if you don't mind me sharing, we were just having a conversation yesterday about getting really good at this and making sure that, like, really individualized reports at some point that speak to here's what's next for your student, right? Here's the data, but here's what you're going to be doing at home, here's what we're working on at school. That takes time to build out, and we've got to automate that to some degree, but we have a big vision around the collective effort and support around our assessments and what we need to know about our students to support them fully.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say to Dr. Battle and to Dr. Williams and Dr. Stinson, like, just thank you for kind of, it's been frustrating with the pandemic, that we had to deal with the pandemic, that we haven't been proactive as we want to be, I would say, into really getting into, into steps to really start doing assessments of what we want to and to be able to see what's best and how to really kind of do that. I know we've had that move as fast as we want to, but now that we've kind of gotten back to new normal, to see that we're back on track on that, I just, I just appreciate that, that I know hasn't been easy trying to figure out going from virtual learning to synchronous and asynchronous and doing everything now that we're starting to really get to the direction or start that journey, what we really want to get down to. So I just want to at least recognize this moment in time where I know the community has been frustrated, or we personally have been frustrated because we've had to divert our time and issues to health, health reasons and health issues and situations that we'd be able to really focus on the academics as deeply and as passionately as we want to. So I just want to just take a moment and just mark, mark this moment for that.
Thank you. I have, excuse me, I have a couple of questions and, I guess, a statement as well. First, I would like to say that I really appreciate that there is the summary of the assessment results. I think that's really very helpful for not only us as a board, but also for the audience that's watching, and so I really appreciate that being added. Dr. Stinson, also giving us the definition of what is a quintile because that is also helpful, again, not just for us, but for everybody that is ideally, hopefully, watching. So on that note, can we get a definition of what is ILT?
ILT is an instructional leadership team, and that's something that the Division of Schools has been instituting over the last years, Dr. Bellamy said, at their schools. It's comprised largely, of course, of the principal, administrators, key staff, teachers, deans, coaches, et cetera. And so they, they meet regularly to review school-wide data, look for trends, support teachers, and support the growth of their students with regard to whatever it is. It could be attendance, it could be behavior, it could be academics.
The ILT group that's reviewing it, and of, which, of course, is by grade band and depending on how that school is organized, but also our individual teachers, when they're reviewing this information, which I am also very glad that it's available to them, as I know that's been a key issue and concern for not just teachers, but also us and just the theory of what is the reason for assessments, when they provide that information, I know it was keyed that we said that we want the data to be usable, and I know we're working on how that data is going to be presented. Do we have an idea of what we think that will look like besides, I know many of us are interested in what assessment data is, and we can easily discern that, but do we have an idea of what that will look like and how it will be provided to them?
Yes, we've, I think, spent hours on top of hours on top of hours talking about this most recently because, like you say, we can have all this information, but how we communicate it, what our expectations are around it, I mean, it all, it all matters. And this was the whole point of the redesign of the suite of assessments. And so David, you do a really good job of communicating why, like, what we're trying to pull from each assessment. Could you, do you mind providing an overview for the board?
Yes, ma'am. The screening, again, is part of FastBridge. It's a universal screening for academic and dyslexia skill areas, and we want to know which students need more support and in what specific areas. And the screening is intended to help us pinpoint, identify specifically what skill areas or skill deficits may need to be addressed. Those skills are important because without some of those critical foundational skills, students may struggle in their tier-one class to identify, to access the core standards in their tier-one instruction. And so students who's receiving intervention is getting those skill gaps remediated so they can better access the grade-level standards in the classroom with their peers. The adaptive measures, A reading and A math, attempt to answer the question, how are we progressing and are, and are students growing? And because it's naturally a norm, we can sort of see with those quintiles and some of the median national percentile comparisons to see are our students progressing and making growth over time. The benchmark, though, represents just a one-time achievement measure to see are our kids getting there? Are they meeting the standards that are outlined by the State Department? So those three, those three different questions, what supports are needed, are we growing, are we progressing, and are we getting where we intend to go with respect to our standards? Those are three questions, and our assessment system can, can strongly answer all three of those questions.
Do we have a, parent-teacher conferences are on Friday. Within those conferences, do we have a standardized way that any of this information will be presented or do we'll be going forward?
That's something that, that we actually talked about again today. We needed, we need to have a standardized way that we talk about the information. We don't have that just yet, given our, the newness of our system, but we have shared, again, protocols and the reports, how to access the reports. There are family reports that are automatically generated. We think it could use probably some more framing and contextual language to help parents make sense and understand exactly what this data represents. So that's something that we're definitely going to, going to work toward.
I, I mean, I would love it if it's, of course, available to parents in a multitude of ways. Parent-teacher conferences, obviously, that's a tight timeline against this new assessment, but I think that's a good thing for us to shoot for, for us to be able to use it and model how that information's usable. Also, along with how we are trying to see what at-home things parents and students can do, I noticed that, sorry, I have so many different notes, excuse me, for grade-seven takeaways and grade-three takeaways in both science, it was, just a little odd note, that the non-traditional item types had the same percentage. They scored the same, 22.4% and 22.5%. So we're not noticing really an increase of, they're not doing any better as they get to seventh grade on those specific questions. How do we teach students to do better in those ways? How are we expecting teachers to accommodate that? Are we asking parents to do that? How are we planning on using that data and that interest?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, and again, we don't want to drill for test prep and test-taking processes while at the same time balancing, understanding the need that students have to be successful in demonstrating their knowledge. And so if I'm looking at the item report, this is how incredibly detailed this gets, if the correct answers choices were B, C, and D, I can see which three kids responded to. I can also see if they only selected one item, which means to me that they may not fundamentally be understanding that I have to select multiple correct items to get this one right. Maybe they got two of the three correct. So it's important to think about the content intersecting with the item type and understanding what's interfering with the kid's ability to demonstrate mastery of that particular in response to that question. So having access to the items and knowing the standard and then looking at the reports and knowing how your kids responded really just empowers our teachers to think about going forward. Is it worth the time to take and think about, how can I create a simple multi-select item so kids real understand, when you see a question that looks like this, think about what, what's required of you to answer it successfully? And, you know, kids being champions of their learning and, and, you know, strong scholars empower them to apply that skill in the, in the test setting format. But again, I think it's just a little bit of an idea of going over that. I think our teachers and our staff can certainly handle that. Again, not to drill it, but it's a familiarity, and they need to create a sense of familiarity with those types of items.
And it's that level of detail that will also empower the conversations between the teacher and the parent, right? Because now we can be even more specific and detailed around exactly, you know, if it's a content, you know, concern, if it's a item-type concern, you know, so that we can be even more specific around what's needed at home as we start to dig into those reports. Again, that's the feedback I've been receiving already is like, wow, like, I see so much. It covers so much around where my students are, why they, it might not be a content issue. It could simply be that the, they didn't understand the item type in front of them and then teaching them how to respond accordingly. And I must echo what David is saying. We're not here to teach a test, right? We're, we're educating kids, and so there's a fine balance between the two, and so we also want to make sure we're communicating that, we're training our staff on how to respond appropriately to this great data they now have at their fingertips.
Absolutely. I want to be clear, I have absolutely no encouragement to be teaching to a test, but it is a common phrase that I have heard all my life and still hear of, I'm just not a good test taker. My belief is that there are definite ways that some students struggle with test-taking because they don't have the fundamental understanding that we're talking about in this situation. So I'd rather them not take an assessment that's of no benefit to them if they needed just a simple scaffolding or something along those lessons. So I'm glad that that's being discussed in the ILT in other ways to try to make sure that's hit across the boards, we can have that growth, but also individually, students may need it. I see there's a couple more questions, so I will go with Ms. Tyler and then our student board member. Do you have a question, yes?
Oh, yeah. Good.
So, again, like I've already said, I am extremely appreciative that our teachers will actually have access to the results of this. So my next question is, how much time are we giving them to go over these results? Are we expecting them to do this on their own time? Are we giving them a professional day where, where everybody gets to pour over the responses and ask questions of their team? How are we ensuring that they actually get to take the time to parse through the information?
So different schools have addressed the immediacy of getting the results because you can literally get them as soon as you're done taking them, right? And so many teachers, obviously, like, I'm sure you yourself did in the classroom, you jumped right in the second they were finished, right? We don't want them to have to do that, so we do encourage them to use already established planning time meetings to do that, and in particular, professional development days that we try to coincide. Now, obviously, our calendar's built years in advance, so the one coming up on November 8th would be a prime time to be able to do this, and we are encouraging many of our schools and their ILTs to do that. The ILT is oftentimes a situation where teachers are being paid a leadership stipend to participate because we want teacher voice on that committee, and that's, in fact, when ILTs are at their strongest. So we're encouraging ILTs, they do that inside sometimes the confines of their day through providing coverage for classes. Sometimes they meet after school, and again, that's a stipended position. It's handled a little bit differently everywhere. But we would hope they would attach to existing structures and not create additional meetings for that, right? And again, we have those collaborative structures already very well embedded and hopefully see lots of great use on the professional development day coming up on the 8th. Is it the 8th? Did I just give the wrong day?
I think that's right.
It's the 8th, isn't it? Okay, thank you.
And then, I guess, in the future, could we, and I don't know how much control we have over when we're supposed to give it, if there's windows for this, the same way there used to be from, I don't know about that.
Yeah, so this is, this is excellent, and I can give kudos to this team because we are creating even stronger alignment between what our general calendar looks like, what those planning session, planning days look like, when we're coming together, teams to review data to kind of our testing window or assessment window, if you will. And so we have a great deal of that this year, but we've already accounted for, had discussions about that for the future as well, given the limitations we have, but we're, we're trying to get better alignment around when those cycles end and where they began so we have time embedded for review and adjustments to be made.
Great. That was going to be my question, just ensuring that once you get the results, you don't have to wait two weeks to go over them, and there's not a parent-teacher conference in between when you're supposed to talk about them, but after you get the results. So just kind of that timeframe, and I know you guys are on top of that, so it sounds like you've already thought about that and are planning for that moving forward, which I think is really important. So, and then I guess the last thing is, when we're talking about how to address the issues where we see more supports that are needed for the students, are we building that into just putting them in their different tiers, or are we changing some of the way the teachers are expected to present curriculum? How, how are we making sure that those needs are being met in a way that allows the teacher some autonomy to meet the needs that she knows, he or she knows need to be met? But I know, because there's also still some, some pretty strict guide rails around what you're supposed to be doing during a 90-minute timeframe or this, other, for that. So how are we, are we able to build that into the existing structure that we can address the issues and not say, well, I didn't get to do that section of it because I was addressing these issues, or I have to pick and choose between what I'm going to do? Does that, if that makes sense?
David, do you want to take the question?
I can think of two primary ways that I would do and did do in the classroom. The first one is, as a teacher, when I'm starting my class, I usually had a warm-up or bell ringers on the board because I have to take attendance, I'm going to check homework, I'm going to make eye contact with every single kid that comes in my door. And during that time, it certainly makes sense, within those first few minutes, to continue to provide content that they may have seen that challenged them or go over some of the item types that presented difficulty. You're not spending a lot of time. It's just the first few minutes, it's housekeeping, it's there, but I want to continue to build in that knowledge across the year. The second thing I did was if I had content that I knew needed to carry through, my warm-ups in third quarter would still continue to talk about the content that we've already learned that I need to keep spiraling back to. The second thing is, I would take my assessments and I would tell my students, you're going to be assessed on content that was in unit three, but also be prepared for content that you may have struggled with from unit one. So there's an opportunity to expand both our assessments and some of our remedial instruction. The third thing I can think of, though, is depending on the assessment measure that I've got, I've taken, if we're looking at the growth or the skills or the achievement, I want to respond most appropriately to what the greatest, the greatest need is that has been identified. So certainly, if I'm in an intervention, that's, that's because the students had demonstrated some level of risk that I needed to tend to ensure up, and so then we would be providing appropriate instruction during that, that PLT.
Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me, Elena, will you share your question, and then we'll have Dr.
Actually, I don't have a question. It's more of a comment, but I took the PSAT today, so this is, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, my experience in tests and what I feel like helped and didn't. And I personally, I don't think I've ever even taken the FastBridge, so I don't really know much about that, but the benchmark, I have taken, and I do think that in comparison to other tests we've taken, such as MAP, benchmark, it's, it's a lot more familiar because they are aligned to the standards of each quarter. And so I think that test-taking and just tests in general are very stressful, and that's anxiety-inducing for students. So when you take a test like MAP and it's adaptive and you're doing good, but you don't know you're doing good because you're getting hard questions, like, it's such a, such a mind-boggling thing. Versus a benchmark, it's a lot more comfortable because you're looking at something that you've been doing all year. So I definitely think the benchmark is, it's good. Also, though, I think that they're definitely, like, when we talked about how third grade and seventh grade still weren't doing good with the non-traditional questions, I think that that is very significant because, you know, we're going to be taking tests for, like, the rest of our, like, school careers, so there should be some type, some level of growth there, and I think that, you know, learning to work with those non-traditional items as well as, you know, say, like, you know, tests are timed, and I was like, it's not that I don't know the content, I don't have time to do it. So just, you know, learning how to strategically, you know, take tests and not have, you don't need to use a calculator for everything. And I just feel like, a lot of the times, a lot of things I hear after we take EOCs and things like that is, I wasn't ready and I didn't know, or they didn't tell us that we were going to have to X, Y, and Z. And I feel like there has to be, like we said, not teaching to the test, but when we take the time and do it consistently throughout the year, it's not teaching to the test because you're not cramming in all of this prep and ACT prep, you know, six months before my test. It's like, you know, I totally should have been doing this last year. So, you know, it's just things like that. I feel like there's, like we said, not teaching to the test, but there's just, there's a lot of strategies and things that have been proven to benefit students when taking tests. And I feel like we know, you know, as test-takers and people who take tests, we know that, and a lot of students don't. And so I think that it's just important to go over a lot of the times, just the basic do's and don'ts of tests and how to do it quickly and how to, because, you know, like we said, the ACT and the SAT, those aren't, you know, those aren't measurements of, you know, how smart the child truly is. It's, you know, it's, it really is, that's one of those things where it really is just to the test, and it's, and your score has nothing to do with you as a person, it's just how you know how to take the test. And a lot of students, in my experience, when we were taking the, what's it, TrueScore? Some, some practice ACT thing. And, you know, a lot of people, they were just really, like, bummed out about their tests, but they were like, now that I've done it, I probably could do it again and do it a lot better, but when we don't have that exposure to a different type of testing material, I think that is where a lot of our struggle. type of testing material, I think that is where a lot of our struggles are. Because when we learn, and this could be great and perfect and effective teaching throughout the year, and every May, then we want to randomly say, hey, don't forget, do this, that, and the third. It's not, it doesn't stick, and it's not effective. Yeah, that's my feel. Also, you know, I'm hoping to see, of course, that we can, over time, you know, decrease those achievement gaps. And I know that the district has a lot of plans for that, so I'm excited to see it.
Thank you for your student perspective. Dr. Navab.
Man, how can I top that? Thank you so much. A lot of my questions were asked throughout this, but I do, I do want to acknowledge one thing and then ask a question to follow up that. Dr. Williams, you had mentioned the, you like to acknowledge it as unfinished learning versus learning loss. Would you clarify why you would like to do it as unfinished learning versus learning loss, just for clarity? I think I understand it, but I think it has become such a hot topic in a way. And I think, you know, not only us as board members really need to understand it, but the general public as well.
Yeah, to me personally, learning loss implies that there's some sort of regression, that we got to a certain point, and then we have gone backwards. And I haven't seen any data across any of our measures that indicate that we have regressed. We may have moved forward, albeit more slowly, but we are still moving forward. And so to say learning loss, again, implies regression, and we are certainly not regressing, nor will we. Instead, we're going to move forward, we need to continue to accelerate the pace at which we move forward. But that's how we distinguish the difference, and that's why I'm really careful with those words.
Thank you. And I know the goal as the district is to make sure that we are closing the gaps in unfinished learning and accelerating learning where we can to help get students where we need them to be throughout the year. With that being said, this is where differentiation and our RTI model comes in. Can you talk a little bit, Dr. Battle, about, sorry, can you talk a little bit about how we're connecting this new data with how we are adjusting, or how we are differentiating our learning within the classroom, and how we are supporting the RTI model in that tiered learning process? You mentioned Tier 1, and I think, I don't think a lot of people really understand what Tier 1 is, but if you could talk a little bit about that as well?
We absolutely can, Dr. Battle.
Dr. Battle.
Navab McKenney. Thank you for your question. Dr. Williams, if you want to approach the podium?
Yes, certainly. So the screening instrument that we talked about, the screening assessment, which is our FastBridge suite of assessments, helps identify skill areas and students that might need a little bit more support and intervention. Those interventions are typically provided in personalized learning time. So when we look at the data, and we have what's called an identified risk level, students at high risk, and that just means they're at high risk of falling behind their grade-level peers with respect to their, these skills, then we can provide very targeted and specific interventions to remediate those skills so that they don't stay in the way in students being able to access the standards. The standards are what are going to be taught in that Tier 1 classroom. So we have Tier 1 math, Tier 1 English, for example. And if there are skills, like simple calculations, like your multiplication facts. And if I have a word problem, or I'm working with fractions, maybe I'm scaling fractions, but I still struggle with those multiplication facts, I can't perform this other problem here very well, right? And so we want to continue to provide very skilled and targeted supports during our Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention times, and that will also help students be more successful in Tier 1 with the standards.
Thank you. I just want some clarification because we're still using the word tiers. Can you describe what those different tiers look like? So for instance, Tier 1 is general classroom, general population of students, and then Tier 2, Tier 3.
Right. According to the state's RTI manual, they indicate progressive levels of intensity. So as you said, Tier 1, sometimes it's called universal prevention. Every student is going to be in Tier 1 regardless if they have a disability, if they're an English learner, et cetera. All students will receive high-quality Tier 1. I do want to pick up on the other part of your question, that it's important to understand where students are with respect to the continuum of learning, so that I am providing very personalized differentiation within the Tier 1. However, that may not be just enough, right? Some students may need more. And so that progressive levels of intensity may mean a Tier 2 may be a small group of students, say, 6 to 8 students. And they'll get more targeted support at that ratio with a group of 6 to 8 students per interventionist or per teacher. Tier 3, if students aren't responding to Tier 2, based on the data, they may move to another progressive level of intensity, and maybe we're down to 2 or 3 or 4 students per staff ratio during that personalized turn of learning time. And that's where you can get a little bit more intense, more targeted, more explicit systematic instruction in the Tier 3 level.
Thank you. And then one other thing, Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 with, according to the RTI model, when they're in Tier 2, Tier 3, that's essentially a pull-out, but they still get the Tier 1 instruction in addition to the pull-out, correct?
Yes, thanks for that. That's an important clarification. Thank you. Every, every student will get Tier 1, and then if they are identified in need of Tier 2 and Tier 3, that is in addition to Tier 1. So if I'm a student that's in need of Tier 2 intervention, I'm getting my Tier 1 instruction with all my classmates in the general education classroom. And then, what's appropriate for me, maybe to go to, during personalized turning line, go get some math intervention, or some reading intervention, based on the data that I've gotten from the screener. So, but all of that is in addition to Tier 1. So it's not a pull-out from Tier 1, it's in addition to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will be our last question, Ms. Tyler.
Can a student skip a question, since it's computerized?
They can actually move forward and back, and then the system will tell them, you know, at the end, sort of a summary on which questions, if they need to go back, you have an answer to question A, for example, before they actually submit.
Thank you so much for providing all of this information, especially the tone-setting information and just like the base layer. I really appreciate that as a practice for us, not only for us, but everybody. And I appreciate it.
It's very helpful.
And if I could add one more thing to that, I have talked with several teachers and principals related to this new model, and they have been excited about the, about the work that's happening and the potential for the future as they continue to refine the model and really make it work and support students and instruction. So I really appreciate it.
All right. That moves us on to governance issues. Thank you so much. May, we have removed or pulled out, excuse me, Action 1B4 and 1B11. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with those amendments?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand of approving the consent agenda as stated. Thank you. All right. Item 1B4 was pulled off by Ms. Tyler. Ms. Tyler, will you please have your question?
Yes. So, just, I guess, a real quick, I don't, so this is about procuring bipolarization, I don't have the number, I don't have the word right in front of me. Yeah, bipolar ionization devices for multiple MMPS schools to improve indoor air quality. And so several, I just had a bunch of different questions. So I think I'll just kind of go through them one at a time instead of just asking all of them and then waiting. So my first one is just about the amount that we're spending. It's about 4.5 million. And so I was just asking about kind of like the RFP and making sure that that's commensurate with what we're seeing everywhere.
Yes, that is correct. As I'm speaking, I'll ask, if you don't mind, Chief Sullivan to come on up to the podium. You're correct, the amount we're spending is in line with the product type. We went through our set process, and the winning bid was the lowest of the five bids we received. Actually, the highest was more than double what we currently have before you.
Okay. And then my next two questions kind of go together. How many units are we expecting to receive from this? And where are, how are we choosing where they go and where they're placed?
Yeah, my understanding is we have over 11,000, 11,000 or more units that we're planning to receive. And Chief Sullivan, if you want to answer the second question about placement.
She's good, isn't she?
Yeah.
She knows everything.
They will be at every school.
Okay. And so every classroom, every school?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's not, schools are not going to have to pick and choose who gets one?
That's not, no.
Perfect. That's, that was a concern of mine. So they will be available for every classroom. Will they also be in larger rooms, or will they not be as effective in a room that's larger than what they can handle, like a cafeteria, for example?
They will be in every space.
Okay.
So it's, it goes into, into our, into our air units, air handling units, each individual one.
Okay.
Duckwork. Excuse me.
Okay, so it's not a standalone?
It is not a standalone.
Okay. And then I guess, so knowing that, just wanted to check in on, you know, the make and the model of what we're going to be receiving, and where it falls along the lines of quality against what else is available on the market.
What, Chief Sullivan? Yes, ma'am. It, it is a, again, fantastically priced product for what we saw, and it has really good recommendations around the country and within the state as well. And I actually have a piece of the product, if you would like to see it here today. Hold a moment.
Yeah.
That's right. Don't play with it till it's your turn.
So David will bring those up, Mr. Proffal will bring those up, and so you can see them. But as you can see, this is one. There's another coming up as well. And we have different types because you have different types of units within our district. We have different types of ductwork, depending on when you had that HVAC work done at your school and the age of your school. And so for each unit to go in to work as a filtration system, you have to have something that will marry with that unit. So, so this is what they look like, and they, they go in, da-da-da. They, they go in as part of the unit. It is not a standard 110 plug-in, so it's much more energy efficient. And they do, they do their work by, by creating more filtering than a standard air ionization product that you would buy at, at your local hardware store and that you would plug in. They aren't just filtering the air around them, they're actually asking, asking the particles with their technology to come out of the air and to become attached to each other and to be bigger so that they can then become filtered into, into that unit and...
Using a standard filter.
Using a standard filter.
Okay. What about our portables? Are they also going to have access to these?
Yes.
And I guess those would be, have to be more standalone, right? Or, no?
They make one that I was not able to get quickly.
But they would go in the little...
It's a strip that goes over the intake piece of the, that unit. And so as the air crosses over the needle points, which in this particular case, are these two little pieces right here, creates ionization, which coagulates all of the particulate matter in the air to larger pieces. So it's easier trapped within the filter. And it works in everyone, even if we have a window unit, if we have ductwork such as this, it works, it's usually taken in around wherever the return air grills are. That's where you'll find these located.
And this is a picture. You can see it almost looks like a, like a buzzsaw, almost, kind of, you know? I mean, it's just, that's the little strip that will go in.
Great. That's really good to know. As somebody who used to teach in a portable, it's really good to know that they're being taken care of. And then I guess, so originally, I know groups and parents had say, hey, should we purchase this at the beginning of COVID? And we were told to let them know that it would not necessarily be helpful because the COVID particles were so small. Are these intended to filter out COVID particles, or just help the air be more pure in general, not necessarily targeting COVID? What's...
This is, this first, this is a commercial product. This is not a, you can buy off the shelf unit first. I just want to establish, this is not the same that was being requested at the beginning of COVID. But I'll let the team, as you can see, they very well research and are very familiar with, with all of our units. And quite frankly, when, when my leadership team brought this to me early on, in the process, we were ready to move on it because they'd researched and known this was the direction we wanted to go. But I received notice from the controller that we could not do it. And so we're at this point now, because after a few phone calls from us, a little pushback around it, and other districts also wanted to move in this direction, they rescinded their initial communication that we could not do this. And so I'm just commending them on their research and background, knowing where we need to go, and getting us to this point, which is why we're talking about it today. So, go ahead.
Just real quick, what this does, it's intended to take all particulate matter in the air. Doesn't matter whether it's viral particulate matter, whether it's dust, dirt, whatever may be flying around in your, your air. And it creates an electrolysis, if you will, okay? And those negative particles bond one another. So it doesn't matter whether it's a COVID particulate matter, which is extremely small compared to, I won't get into the science real quick, but human hair is 100 microns, this is .13 micron, so way much smaller than, than you can imagine. But if it's in the air, this would allow it to gather to other particles and be collected in a normal, what I call a normal filter that we use, which is around a MERV 10 filter.
And then the last question is, I see that we're using Essar funds for this. How long do these tend to last? Is there upkeep on them that we need to be concerned about? Because these sound great. I'm excited for them. I think anything we can do to improve the air quality in our schools is, we should do it. So just how, you know, what's, what's the upkeep? How long are we going to be able to continue to use these appropriately?
Thank you for your question.
Virtually no upkeep. Once they're plugged in, they're, they're good. I think there's a five to 10-year warranty on them. I'm not quite sure on that, but it's a relatively long for something that's electronic, something that's relatively long.
And then is the intent that we would want to add them into like maybe a capital needs and have them on a rotating basis? Is that the intent, or have we not thought about that at this point?
I think the original intent is that this is likely going to be, at this moment, not considered a recurring expense for us because of the, you know, longevity of, of the product. And so I think that's to be determined, once we get them installed into our buildings. But right now, we're not considering this kind of a recurring cost for us.
Five to 10 years down the road, we might start thinking in those terms. But right now, it would be one of those one-offs where an electronic piece might not stop working, and we have to replace it, so.
Okay. And then just last for my district, will these be in James Lawson High School because it's a brand-new building?
They will be installed in Lawson, but after, after Lawson is open.
Okay. Okay. And when will they be installed everywhere else?
They're, well, once the contract's approved and we get the orders placed, the POs placed, and so on and so forth. I'm going to guess, within the next six months, we'll start installing them, and they're to go relatively fast.
Okay, great. I really appreciate it. Thank you. This is, this sounds very exciting, and I'm glad that we're following the science of saying that air quality matters. And that's more than just COVID, that's in general, for learning, air quality matters. So, thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion for approval on 1B4?
I move to approve.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of approving 1B4, please raise your hand.
Thank you. It's unanimous. We will move on to 1B11. I have Ms. Masters.
All right. So I see that we are increasing our contract for the Sown to Grow system. So, and it's written as provision of a navigator and student support system. And I am just wondering, is this only for the system itself? Does this also cover staffing around the navigator program, and then also just wanting to do sort of a check-in on the outcomes around the program, and sort of what, what sort of metrics we're tracking with that?
My understanding, there's no staff as a part of this contract. This is all around the program. And of course, the Sown to Grow program supports our signature initiative around our navigators. And so what we are tracking is the impact, we're starting to track and evaluate, bringing some data to the table around the impact of our navigators with... some data to the table around the impact of our navigators with our SEL goals. So we have SEL, a focused outcome, we also have a transition focused outcome, both are housed within Sown to Grow. So it's not an evaluation of that system, but in concert or in service to the work of our navigators. And I'm just going to go just on some anecdotal data I have. We've been able to pull some very critical data to respond to out of Sown to Grow. Our students and the feedback we receive from our students is that they see it as a very safe way to communicate how they're doing, what's top of mind, in some cases, some critical things that we needed to respond to that flag our team and kind of spurs us into action. It is also the method I went, I talked about the transition plans, that's where all of our transition plans, of course, we have a goal of 100% of transition plans for every student, every transition grade, every year, which we just about met that goal last year in this first year of implementation. But it's also, Sown to Grow is also the place where our navigators provide feedback to our students. And so our students are entering their feedback, our navigators are responsive to that feedback. And of course, it kind of triggers, Dr. Springer, tell me if you use another word, but it kind of triggers our collaborative referral process as well, so that we know where our students are. But it is our safe, kind of confidential way of getting feedback from students and allowing those navigators to support them, not only in the kind of face-to-face, but when they're not together in a kind of electronic fashion.
So are our staff, are they provided with additional compensation for serving in that navigator role?
No, that is a part of our roles and responsibilities as adults. Of course, our goal, and what we're matching, is every student to a caring adult, which we know, where research has been proven that that is critical to the successful pathway of a student in their building. And so it might not be, we're talking about smaller cohorts of students, so it might not be your classroom teacher. It could be an administrator, it could be a counselor, it could be front office staff, it could be anyone who has any role within that school community, which we've gotten lots of positive feedback about that as well. But no, it is a part of our natural kind of system and operations. Schools kind of go about it differently based upon their size of their school, how their daily structure is organized, but it is embedded in a part of the work that we do as educators and been a part of team.
So it happens during the school day?
For the most part. I mean, you might have a school here or there who has a leadership role around navigators, and they charge someone with going in and making sure that we've met our goal around feedback for the week, or just managing when new students come in, that they're connected to someone within our student management system. And so it just depends on the scale and scope of the navigator system within the school, if you might have additional roles outside of the day to just make sure the integrity of our navigator program is where we intend and plan for it to be.
So when do those conversations take place? Is it during a child's PLT time?
It could, very well. It could be during, it could be during PLT. I mean, our schools have so many creative names and spaces where they have these conversations, but you could definitely see it during PLT, some of them have. I think Abinizir has talked about it, they have kind of an advisor, mentor, mentee program at their school. So it just depends on the school. And so what we have kind of established is around building these positive relationships with our students in a small kind of cohort way. And we've allowed, with the right supports, of course, and tools like Sown to Grow, we've allowed our schools to kind of build it and integrate it into their own school culture. And so we're just supporting it from the lens of how it plays out in the school culture. But Sown to Grow in particular actually grew out of feedback from our schools. And particularly, we had one school who went that route initially and shared back with us how powerful Sown to Grow was in coordination with our navigator initiative. And so from that, we did some piloting with a few schools, and then we were able to take it to scale. But it actually came to us from feedback from one of our schools in particular.
So is there, do the students have any sort of input on, like, who their navigator is, or what their sort of pre-existing relationship might be with?
Well, I mean, I think, first and foremost, I think our schools know our kids and families best. And so they're going into this assignment with that information. We have talked frequently about the ability to shift if needed. I mean, we want to make sure that they're positive relationships. So if you were assigned someone that I've had a really lasting positive relationship with, we could, you know, switch students if needed. But we're encouraging all of our schools to approach this with leveraging existing relationships and positive connections that already exist. But what makes this initiative beautiful is that every student should have that. And so we're working to build that for every single student, every school, regardless of the school that you attend, that you have and are connected to, someone who cares about you, who is checking in with you, providing you feedback, and then connecting you with wraparound services that you may need.
I'm just, you know, I just want to ensure that it's, you know, it's something that the students can access, but also not an additional burden on teachers and staff, and making sure that they sort of have the support they need. And what would the circumstance be if a teacher was dealing with a situation that just felt, you know, like too much for them with a student?
It's what they would do in a classroom if they had a situation that they felt was burdened. They will solicit the support of maybe the school counselor, or the system principal, or the principal. But foundationally, there is not much we're going to accomplish in educating our students if we do not know our students and build positive relationships. That is foundational to everything that we do, and so there's no trade-off there. We have to know our students, we have to have systems and structures for us to get there. There has been, you know, considerations early on around the flexibilities and what that should look like, and we've taken that and we've made adjustments as needed. But this is, I mean, nationally, we're having this conversation, and nationally, Nashville is leading it, because other schools are trying to, other school districts are trying to figure out how to build such models, because we cannot afford to have any one student who doesn't feel connected to their community and to their teachers and staff that they're working towards. And I've been in schools, on school visits, where kids have, like, nearly run me over because they've got to get to class and get their Sown to Grow feedback into the system because they have something to say, right? And they want to share that information with us. And so we've encouraged our schools to integrate it into their school culture as best they could when they've struggled with that. I will tell you, Chief Chen, Chief Springer have set personally with teams, as well as Chief Bellamy and Chief Perry, to make sure that we're helping them be thoughtful about what it could look like, so that it is a natural part of the way we grow students in MMPS. And quite frankly, when we're talking about the integration of academics and SEL, this is a perfect example of how we can make that happen.
Do you have any idea, like, sort of, on average, how much time teachers put into this? Like, I know it's spread out across, you know, all of the teachers and staff in a school, but I'm just kind of trying, like, in a typical teacher day, like, what portion of it is serving as a navigator?
If you want to respond to the specific question, sure.
I hear from both of us. What we see, I think, in general, is a lot of different models that schools might employ. So for example, if you have an advisory model that is built into your day, like, that is built in the structure of your week, so in those cases, we might see you have the time that you spend in advisory, plus if there's any time that you're grabbing right after class or during the day to check in with the students. It's hard to pinpoint a specific amount of time, because when we see this done well, it's integrated into the school day, and it's integrated to other interactions that adults are having with kids who they know well and know personally. So I don't want to ballpark a number because of that, but I think what we're seeing is it's integrated in the structure of all of those wraparound supports you're providing in the context of a school day.
And just for those who are listening, and we keep using the term or acronym PLT that is personalized learning time. And again, I think this fits the definition, when you're thinking about academics, but also SEL, of that personalized time for students. Dr. Springer, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just was going to say that just today, in a school, we heard about a school that has incorporated into their school day, and so on Mondays, every Monday, they have a set aside time school-wide for teams to check in with students, to provide feedback, and also for students to look at the goals that they have set within Sown to Grow, to make sure that they are tracking. So this is a weekly routine for this one specific school. That is the type of implementation we are want to highlight. But again, there are just different models across different schools in our district.
And again, it's every student. Every student, I would imagine, appreciates an opportunity to share, voice, connect, build those relationships. And of course, we know what all the research says around having at least one caring adult that every student, and we're going for much more than that, but this is a way to ensure that that's happening across every one of our schools.
Thank you. And I want to just reiterate, PLT time can be used for this, because I know, as you said, different schools are implementing it in different ways. And so I think it's really important, you know, if a school is having trouble with the implementation, that they can maybe lean to a replicable model, like, we take Mondays as our sort of check-in day, just to be sure it can fit well within all of the teachers' week without, you know, providing an undue burden, but that all of the children are also having access to it. Because I think, you know, it probably isn't as helpful for the student if it's the teacher they're talking to is stressed out and rushed about the whole process. So just sort of thinking about that as, like, Dr. Bellamy, as you're just talking with different principals about how they're structuring their day. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And just to point out one thing, this is not new, for sure, for our high schools, who've had the advisory time since its inception. And so it's just a structured way, an intentional strategic way, that we want to make sure that we're connecting with our students. And then the state gifted us with the PLT time as well. And so we're going to make the best of that time to connect with our students and make sure that it is really personalized and individualized to the needs of our students.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve 1B11? They moved. Can I have a second from one of them? Thank you. It's been first and seconded. If you are in approval, if you want to vote in the affirmative of that, please raise your hand. I apologize for the confusion there. Thank you. Unanimous? All right, announcements. We will start with District 3.
What? No, that's fine. You're just like, it never starts with me.
Well, District 1 is gone.
Oh, okay.
And I'm District 2.
I'm used to being last. Okay, thank you for that. I just want to once again commend the work of our insurance trust, and once again say that we have the best benefits in, maybe in America. I'm just saying, it's better than state benefits, better than metro benefits, and it's a collaborative effort, and I think that's where we do our best work. Because when I go to those insurance trust meetings to represent the board, there are teachers there, and there are MMPS staff members there, and there's our amazing insurance trust people, anyway, so, all that, I just needed to say that. I also want to mention that this Friday at 6:00 PM in the bandroom at Stratford High School, there will be a special ceremony honoring John T. Wade, a MMPS alum and former MMPS teacher. I unfortunately will not be able to attend, so I'm hoping maybe some of my board colleagues can represent at that event. I will be at Family Weekend at my child's college this weekend, doing fall things. Also, just wanted to once again say how much in awe I am of Ms. Jeannie Pupo-Walker and her amazing service on this board. She was a mentor to me, I had the pleasure of serving along with her on the Governance Committee, and I learned so much from her, and I'm just so appreciative of all of her contributions. And I think I'll leave it at that.
District 4?
Hi, a couple of announcements. So Pencil has the upcoming principal for a day this Thursday. I'm excited to be joining the principal at Dupont Hadley Middle School, along with his students and staff, Dr. Kevin Armstrong. Also, on November the 10th, we will have our first district-wide PAC meeting from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Wellness Center, right across from the boardroom. And then early voting has started in all 12 voting locations across Davidson County. Please look at the Davidson County Election Commission, or you can go to my social media, where it has all the voting locations. I encourage you to take your family, a friend, your neighbor, take the dog if you want to, go vote, and vote, vote, vote. Thank you.
Excuse me, District 5?
Tomorrow, we'll have, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, Thursday at 5:00 PM, Jones-Paudet Elementary will host their Hallow Steam event, because, you know, 37208 strong, we are pearl cone cluster, we have pearl cone cluster pride.
That's it? Thank you. District 6?
Okay, so, good news, good news, good news. I want to first give a shout-out to Kane Ridge High School's own Siobhan Abdullah, who is, get this, the starting quarterback, kicker, and punter at Kane Ridge High School. He was awarded tickets to Super Bowl LVII this past Sunday at the Tennessee Titans game by none other than Commissioner Roger Goodell. And I was there to see it, so I was really excited. I was screaming from the top of my lungs in my seat, and nobody around me cared that that was one of my kids, but I cared a lot.
I appreciate you.
So congratulations to Siobhan on that. Also, and in honor of this, this is why I'm dressed like a high school gym teacher today, want to give a big shout-out to MAPCO and our entire Antioch community for participating in the Fueling Our Future promotion that supported Antioch High School athletics. MAPCO donated a check for $7,000 to our Bears, and that is absolutely a great show of support of our students. And so I started thinking about this because I love teachable moments. So I posted this on my socials today, and this is for our, anybody who is, and you'll understand why, Dr. Williams, I asked about the non-traditional questions in just a second. So here's a word question. MAPCO donated $7,000 to Antioch High School based on a 25 cents per gallon donation, per gallon donated to, donate, per gallon purchased. So the question is, approximately, how many vehicles were involved in this promotion if we assume each vehicle's gas tank holds about 30 gallons of gas?
That's a big tank.
I'm just saying. For all the press. Yes, so, and the answer is, I'm sorry, did I hear an answer? I'll give it to you.
Or that's a non-calculated question?
That's a non-calculated problem. So I'll give you the answer, 933.333. So that's approximately the number of vehicles that came through to purchase gas that went directly to support our athletics program at Antioch High School. So that's great, and I commend them, and I'm so excited for them for that. And finally, I will be participating in Pencil's Principal for a Day this Thursday. I will be at the invitation of Mrs. Myrie at Cambridge Early Learning Center. I'm super excited to be with the Little Babes. So I will be there for drop-off at 7:30 in the morning. That should be, I should have a lot to report after that. Oh, and I'm sorry, one last thing. Our next community meeting for District 6 will be on November 15th at the Southeast Branch Library in the large community room at 6:30 PM. And all this information will be on my socials. So, thank you.
Thank you. District 7?
See, we geeked out with you. We're taking it to the very end. So October is Breast Cancer Month, I encourage everyone to get screened. This summer, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. I am doing fine, so no worries. But the reason I did it and going to Ms. Masters' part is because I got a call, I participate in MMPS insurance about a breast cancer screening, and I was on the waitlist, but I went ahead and decided to get my mammogram and to do it with the Vanderbilt Clinic. So going back to our grade insurance, please to the staff, especially to the women, the women of color gets green. We tend to die from breast cancer at a 4% higher rate than our white counterparts, because if you catch it early, it's curable, it's survivable, and you have to go do less intensive treatment and therapy. So please, 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 get your mammogram so you can be there in the classroom. We want you in the classroom and not outside the classroom, so if you can please do that, we appreciate it. Thank you.
District 8?
Let me just start by saying thank you to Ms. Claire for her bravery in both what she has been going through herself, but also in taking the time to champion breast cancer awareness for everyone. So thank you for that. We appreciate it. A quick shout out again to Ms. Emily Riley from Julia Green, who was one of the CMA Teachers of the Year. This week at Hillsborough High School is their College Week. And lots of different activities happening every day. But next, let's see, next Tuesday night, is that right? Is next Tuesday night November 1st?
Yes.
Oh my gosh. Everybody, get your Halloween costumes! Next Tuesday night is Hillsborough's College Night. All are welcome. They're going to have more than 20 colleges available, also help filling out FAFSA's, et cetera. So please do come and attend that. This Friday night at Hillsborough is Future Burrows Night. So for all feeder schools in the Hillsborough cluster, there will be trick-or-treating. I shouldn't have put this all together with the fact that Halloween's on Monday. On Friday, there will be trick-or-treating, costumes, free hot dogs, free hot dogs, and food available. Also, congrats to Hillsborough again for the women of the volleyball team for being fourth in the state. JT Moore and West End are both in the volleyball championships or competition. And for West End, this is the first time they've been in for, I think it's something like 20 years. So congrats to them. And I got really lucky. And tonight, the JT Moore girls who are in the soccer tournament got pushed back until tomorrow night so I can go to the game. So shout out and good luck to those ladies as well. And my next office hours will also be November 15th, 6:00 PM. Location to be determined, but probably somewhere in Sylvan Park. So, thanks.
Thank you. District 9?
Following along with our voting news, early voting has started. The Bellevue Library opened up today for early voting. So I want to encourage anybody who, I want to encourage everybody who has registered to vote to go and do it. Doing it sooner is better because then you don't forget. So early voting is great. To help you with that, there will be a Bellevue Votes Festival at the Red Caboose Park this Saturday. Caleb Hemmerich will be sponsoring that. It will be from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM with bounce houses, free food, golf cart rides to vote at the Bellevue Library, and more. So there will be, Blinky's Offset BBQ Food Truck will serve free eats from 11:30 till they run out. So if you need an excuse to come and vote, come on out, let your kids jump around in the bounce houses, get some food, and go do your civic duty. So that's exciting. And then on Wednesday, November 2nd, at 6:00 PM, Bellevue Ford Ice Center, the Predators, will be hosting a special event to announce the mascot, colors, and logos for James Lawson High School, which will be open this fall. We're all very excited about it. And we hope that you're able to tune in and get just as excited as we are. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Student board member, I know.
I want to once again shout out Hillsborough's volleyball team. I got to go see them Tuesday, Wednesday, one of those days, at the state tournament. So they did really good. I think they finished fourth in the state. So very proud of them. Also, I think this might be the last week of football for the regular season. So go and see all the sports teams. And I hope everyone had a great fall break. And I hope we can get the second quarter started off wonderful.
Thank you. District Y, today, report records are sent home. So make sure that you check your kids' backpacks. And as mentioned earlier, parent-teacher conferences are on Friday. As always, if you need more than 15 minutes with your teacher, don't forget that you have that access. And you can easily ask your teacher for that additional feedback. They are more than happy to help you, help your student. And so that's always available to you. And it's not just on Friday. Overton, there's been a lot of going on. They had the crucible. And as always, Bobcat players did a great job because they're the Bobcat players. They do a great job. They also had recently, I'm so sorry, but we beat Antioch pretty bad. And that's our main rival. And so we beat them 46 to zero. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. It was 46 to zero. And it was a great bounce back. And we're proud of it.
Yeah, since Kane Ridge beat you guys a couple of weeks ago. But I have something for you.
We will talk later. So we're very excited about that at Overton. It was a very exciting time. Additionally, there's been some wins with cross-country. The boys have second at the MMPS Championship. And Coach Hughes in DeLiga won the District 12 Coaches of the Year as well for TWSDA. And Overton also hosted at the beginning of October, though it's been some time since we have seen everybody, they hosted the marching, Metro Marching Band Classic. And I really appreciate so many of my colleagues.
So much fun. So much fun.
I really appreciate a lot of my colleagues and a lot of our staff being there. It was a lot of a lift for our teachers and staff there, particularly because it happened to be during homecoming week. But it was really wonderful. And it was great to have an entire MMPS event for high school students. And my children will not stop talking about it. And you all are all welcome. But my dad decided to not bring his tuba, though, though he warned, he warned that he might. And Oliver is still undefeated in their football season. And last week was their homecoming. On board news, we have some, some big board news. So first, I want to say that we are very excited, though maybe a little sad because she is my work wife. Ms. Christian Bugs is now engaged. And so we are so. We are excited for her and Mike. You are definitely going to be seeing her show the hand during the photos. That's what the posing was earlier, if you missed it. But we are very excited for you. I am so happy for your blessings. And we're happy, happy for you. Also, in the information that we are just overjoyed about, as we discussed earlier, this past month was Hispanic Heritage Month, but it's also been Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast cancer has affected our board, our board members, past and current, as discussed. And we are just overjoyed with your progress. And that radiation will be ending soon and everything else. And so we are just so appreciative. And we want to encourage, of course, all of our teachers and staff as well to continue to be tested and watched and take care of yourself. It's important to us that you are, that you're okay, not just for our students, though it is important to us, but you are our employees and you are important to us. So please take care, take care of yourself. Other than that, I appreciate everybody being here. And this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, one last thing.
Nope.
Only eight Christmases left, eight Tuesdays left until Christmas. I'm just putting it out there.
That's fair. It's not about Kane Ridge.
I do have something for you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.